We provide rent, mortgage and utility assistance. We provide homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing. We provide client choice food pantries and food distribution for emergencies. We provide public benefit enrollments through the DHS. We do home rehabilitation, accessibility and minor home repair programs. We support transportation and provide a range of transportation and medical transportation supports. We provide utility support, including furnace replacement and weatherization of the house. We do lead testing with the health department and we also conduct mold remediation as well. We do community development block grants across the county and provide supportive services for veterans and their families. We also provide a nationally recognized Head Start program as well as children and family services. And we provide the Meals on Wheels program for seniors. So those who, that's a quick overview about the dozen domains we have and there's a lot to unpack under each of them. But I thought you might like some numbers just for East Point. We have a community action center which responds to emergency calls from residents when they're in, uh, facing eviction, when they're facing a crisis. We've received calls from people who have power outages in the mobile home parks or have an unexpected house fire. So we respond to all types of crises. And in the last year, we responded to about 300 directly from East Point calling that crisis line. We also provide some traditional supports and services that are an ongoing basis. You may have heard of the Water Residential Assistance Program, or RAP, which is offered through the Great Lakes Water Authority. Macomb Community Action is the advocate for Macomb County residents on the Great Lakes Water Authority Board. And we'd love to talk with you about expanding it in East Point. Last year in East Point, we provided over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to residents in East Point on their monthly water bill. And you know, when something happens with the water bill, it's usually not the only thing going on. Most people don't get three or four hundred dollars behind on their water bill if that's the only crisis they're facing. Oftentimes when residents are facing a crisis such as a four hundred dollar reagent in their water bill, they often have past due bills and other bills. They often have other issues with child and family services. They often need other supports. So we view the RAP program as so essential, not just because it provides money for water, but because water is really an indicator of a lot of other struggles. And it's a red flag for us. And we're all about being proactive during the coronavirus crisis. Instead of waiting for residents to reach out to us, we want to work with city councils to find unique ways to proactively reach out to residents. Oftentimes when residents are in crisis, the last thing they're thinking about is calling their utility company to let them know that they're now unemployed. And oftentimes whether it's DTE or consumers, they require the resident to call them to let them know they're unemployed due to COVID, even when they can see they have a thousand dollar past due bill. So we're really trying to change the model from requiring residents in crisis to seek support to proactively letting residents know about support. And so that's one of the reasons I wanted to share with you today, all that we're doing for East Point residents. And hopefully we can increase the level of service that East Point residents are aware of. In addition to the RAP program, I did want to mention that we also support the community development block grant funds and the home funds from the Housing and Urban Development Administration, or HUD. Last year, we provided over a hundred or over one million dollars for home and CDBG services. These included things like your Oakwood Manor Senior Living. We provided forty residential units at Oakwood Manor Senior Living. We supported the community housing network with two scattered sites for residents with disabilities across East Point. We also support the Macomb County Habitat for Humanity, which constructed one single family resident property in East Point. We supported Grafton Homes with two units. And we also supported home renewal systems with four single family residential properties. In addition, as you know, your CDBG dollars helped fund Getz Park, Roxanna Park, the fire department for their firefighter gear, the Johnson Street Avenue reconstruction for three hundred fifty thousand dollars, and the Raven Street improvements for a hundred fourteen thousand dollars. Across all of these programs, Macomb Community Action is your advocate to help you leverage other public and private dollars in these types of investments. And we're also looking to encourage all city councils during this time to think about innovative ways that we can use those standard funding sources to help prevent further disaster as we go into 2021 with COVID. So to recap, we provide a lot of assistance for any stage of crisis. We often have residents tell us that they've waited until they're at the end of their rope. They don't contact us when they're a few months behind. They contact us with an eviction notice. They don't contact us when they're a couple of months behind in the utilities and it's at five hundred dollars. They wait till they get a shut off notice and it's at twelve hundred dollars. So one of the most important things we can do is not just connect residents with the support we provide, but make sure they seek it out early. Right now, during the COVID crisis, there is a lot of fear. There's also a lot of feelings of shame. We have residents tell us they were embarrassed to seek support, that they felt like they'd failed, that they needed support. And we want to make sure that they know about this support and they feel empowered to seek it as soon as they need it. Because that's what we're here for. Thank you, Mayor Owens. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. That's why I asked you to come because I know you have so many resources. I don't know all of them, but I always want to make sure that my residents are aware of how they can get help. And I know you mentioned something about the water bill. I was just talking to our finance director actually today about how we can use the CARES funding to help with, you know, the water bills for our residents here in East Point. And we, and since we're a secondary to, you know, the CARES Act in funding, you guys get it directly with the county. So you guys can have better, you know, ways to, you know, give us that money because when y'all give it to us, we have to give it to certain places directly where, you know, directly and how it's allocated. You guys tell us how to allocate it. But when it's given to the county or the state, you guys do whatever, you know, you can and want to do with it. You're, you're a little bit more free than we are. And so saying that, I was saying, what can you do for the residents as far as helping them with their water bills? Like, you know, through right now to probably like the end of the year or what kind of things that you have right now that you can, you know, not where they have to catch up, but right now, people who might have lost their jobs or things like that and might need some assistance. We don't want to always give people help when it's the very last minute, you know, and they gotta hurry up and catch up. But you know, what, what can we do right now?
I am pleased to announce that we worked with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services to allocate forty million dollars toward water bills across the state of Michigan. This was something residents did not have to apply for. Automatically in the last couple of months, we worked with the DHS offices to look at recipients who were already enrolled in the stamp benefits or the food stamp benefits. If residents were already enrolled, we helped work with the utility companies to help cancel some of their past due bills. So we're always looking for ways to make it that residents don't have to apply, that they automatically get that. We're working with DTE and consumers right now on a similar project to put millions of dollars toward Macomb County reerges and past due bills that residents will not have to apply for. As far as water, we do have the Great Lakes Water Authority program through RAP. And we would encourage you to consider how we could expand resident enrollment within East Point. We usually have around a hundred residents in East Point enrolled. I do know that that is a program that has some administrative burdens. And we'd always happy to help advocate for you in that regard. It is a program that we have heard from some municipalities. The billing and the administrative work can make RAP hard to administer. So I'll say that, just so you know, if you do expand RAP, you might get some complaints from somebody in the city who says you've created more work for them. And that is true. The RAP program does require you to do some administrative and budgeting work to accept the funding and apply it to the bill. However, we are currently negotiating with the Great Lakes Water Authority to help ease some of those administrative burdens to administer the water program.
Okay. Because I know you mentioned that some people don't have to sign up for, you know, water assistance, but everybody's not on food stamps. And everybody, you know, who are, you know, still want to have that ability, you know, because people who were on food stamps and probably still can't get it due to certain income and they're still low income, how do they still be able to get that help that they need? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. If, if any resident has any financial challenges, they should reach out to Macomb Community Action. I can send you a stack of these post, where's my camera? I don't know where it is. There it is. And we have a stack of postcards we're handing out. You can see here's our emergency line, there's the health department's line. And what we're really promoting is also the state mental health line. There's a lot of stigma around mental health. But we've worked out an arrangement that if you call the state helpline, they give you five free virtual counseling sessions. And after that fifth counseling session, they refer and connect you to your local community mental health. And I, I don't think it's something we can talk enough about. You know, one thing we know this year is that crisis has increased domestic violence. It's increased child abuse, it's increased child neglect, and it's increased suicide. We are experiencing more young black suicides than the average suicides. We know part of that's related to the context of police violence, part of it's related to the pandemic, part of it is exacerbating existing racial health disparities. And so it's really important that we don't just help people with their finances, but we really promote and de-stigmatize that mental health line. It's really important for people to seek out mental health care during a crisis, to not wait till they're at the end of their rope. And I think culturally, we have a lot of stigma against mental health. And oftentimes people say, I don't need that. That's not for me. Well, you'd be surprised by what a handful of counseling sessions can do to help people cope with stress or anxiety, to help them cope with uncertainty, to help them address the fears that they have related to COVID and their children or their finances. And so I would have, I'll, I'll send some of these postcards to you. Our number is five eight six four six nine six nine nine nine. And we set up that hotline specifically for the COVID crisis. And I'll tell you, we had somebody just the other week. They called, they said they were on hold for the National Suicide Hotline. They said they had tried twice to get through. They could get through to our line. And they said they had a knife to their throat. They said that they were so behind in their mortgage, they were going to lose their house for their kids. And these are the types of real crisis people are facing. Luckily, we got the police over there. We helped them get out of their eviction. But it's just important to note that there's a lot of strain on families and it does often stem from that financial crisis. So we're here to help with the financial crisis, but we should also make sure we're promoting all of those other services that residents don't often seek out.
Right. Thank you for bringing that up. I actually just lost a friend last week for suicide. And it's real. And everybody that's listening, it's, it's okay to say you're not okay, you know, and get help. And check on your neighbors, check on your friends. Everybody that's smiling and laughing, they're not okay. And so, but we don't ask those real questions. We don't, we don't seek the answers that we need. So I'm glad you brought that up. So again, can you, we'll probably try to post Ms. Doom that information on our website. So you can, you guys, thank you, because we need that information. So thank you for coming out tonight. And taking time with us. First, before I let you leave, the council have any questions? Mr. Curly, councilman?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ernest, I would, you're, what you told us tonight is, is awesome. It's fantastic. And I would hope that we could get a whole, whole lot of those cards to be able to give out at City Hall. And just one last thing, Ernest. At our church, you would be certainly one of our members of our Do Love Club. So I'll put you in Sunday that you are now part of the Genesis Do Love Club. And God bless you guys for doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I want to have you leave and the council has any question. Mr. Monaco?
I was just gonna say, thanks Ernest for coming out, sharing what Macomb Community Action does. I guess maybe I was just gonna say, what's the easiest or best way to share what Macomb Community Action does?
Yeah. Thanks for the question, councilman. I think there are a couple of ways. We have a graphic design team that has web banners and all types of links, flyers, materials. We're happy to send along that package. But there are also some other creative opportunities we can think about. Whatever routine public service the city interacts with its residents on probably has an opportunity to promote these services. If you're sending out your water bills, on your water bill, you can put it on there. If you're sending out property taxes, on the property taxes, you can put it on there. I think it's important that we think about some creative proactive approaches to marketing this. And maybe it's just with your taxes you put out for people who are in tax delinquency. You know, when they get into that second or third year, when you're going to go move toward tax foreclosure, there might be some certain categories of residents you want to market this to. But as Mayor Owens was saying, you don't often know who needs the help. And if they don't need it, they might be able to tell somebody about it. So I would encourage the council to consider a broad approach to marketing. Instead of just those water bills that are delinquent, why not put it on every water bill? Every tax notice, every regular client mailing that you may be sending out. I'd say we'd be happy to help create a footer for the pages you send out saying, East Point is here to help. Connect with services when you're in need. Let a friend know you know they're in need. Because it is so important that in those routine mailings that they already get, to help market this type of material.
Perfect. Thanks. Well, you know how to reach us and send us anything. And Elke, you know how to reach them, so. And I'll happily share information as I can also. Thanks, Ernest.
Thank you again for coming out.
Thank you.
Mayor Postam Lucido, I think she has something to say.
No, I was just gonna say, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a good night. Happy Thanksgiving. Can you call the roll, please? We have our city manager, Assistant City Manager. Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Owens?
Here.
Councilperson Curly?
Here, East Point, Michigan.
Thank you. Mayor Owens, are you in East Point, Michigan as well?
Yes, I am.
All right, beautiful. Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes, here, East Point, Michigan.
Councilperson Lucido?
Here, East Point, Michigan.
And Councilperson Moore?
Here in East Point, Michigan.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
Moved and supported. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Moore?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. The next item is hearing of the public. The first hearing of the public is now open. You have three minutes. Please address all of council and please be respectful. Please state your first name, last name, and your residency, please. Mr. Fairbrother, let me know who is ready to speak.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to give it a few minutes because I don't see anyone yet.
Okay.
If you wish to speak and address the council today, please visually raise your blue hand or else if you don't know how to do that, feel free to just wave into your, your camera and I should see you. As well as you can always comment in the Zoom group chat box.
I do see someone in the chat box.
I, I don't see anyone in the chat box.
Okay. I see a number one in there.
Am I missing something?
I think that's Brian saying the hearing of the public.
Yeah, I believe that's just me saying the hearing of the public is now open. So Madam Mayor, I believe it's now safe to close the floor.
The hearing of the public is now closed. Can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes, please?
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the special meeting minutes of November 2nd, 2020.
Support.
Moved and supported. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
And Councilperson Moore?
Yes.
Can I get approval for the minutes of November 9th, 2020 for our regular meeting, please?
Madam Mayor, I would move the approval of the regular minutes for the meeting of November 9th, 2020.
Support.
Moved and supported. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. May I have approval of the minutes for our special meeting, November 9th, 2020, please?
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the special meeting minutes of November 9th, 2020.
Support.
Moved and supported. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
And Councilperson Moore?
Yes.
We have no scheduled hearings tonight, so we're going to go along with unfinished business for the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1203 to amend Chapter 10, Administration Article 10, Medical Marijuana Facilities of the City of East Point Code of Ordinances.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to give second reading to adopt ordinance number 1203, which amends Chapter 10, Administration Article 10, Medical Marijuana Facilities of the City of East Point Code of Ordinances.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported. Any discussion on this, council? If not, I got motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
No.
And Councilperson Moore?
Councilperson Moore? I'm sorry. No.
Next item is discussion and possible motion on face mask policy. This was brought up by our mayor post him, Ms. Lucido. And so, I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
So I'm, I'm not sure where everyone else stands, but I believe that Ms. Doom might speak on this a little bit because I think she put some new administrative orders together.
Yes, thank you. What we've done is we've taken a look at a lot of facets. We know that COVID is on the uprise. It's come back with a vengeance. And so we have to be even more cautious than we have been in the past. So along with our labor attorney and looking at the new guidelines that the state has put out for safety, we've revised and updated policy for all the employees that they will first read and sign. We'll have a copy of it and it relates to a lot of areas, not just the mask, but to focus on the mask portion of it. Employees will be required to wear a mask when they go up to the counter for any reason. If they, they do not have to wear it at this point, if they're sitting at their desk, but if they have a meeting with someone or if they have to go get up and walk in the halls, the kitchen, restroom, across the halls, they will be required to wear that mask. So we've got to be far more stringent. We've also implemented an online kind of a health check that every employee has to pop online each morning, answer the questions to give a health check. And of course, everyone's temperature will be taken. And we've had the, as you know, we had City Hall closed because we did have some COVID cases. So we had the disinfecting of the City Hall. We're going to continue with additional cleaning of City Hall until this, this virus has ended and we're going to be far more stringent. And I know some people don't like to wear masks and it's difficult for them. But when we have an outbreak and I have to shut City Hall and put all of the employees, including myself, on quarantine, then we have to revisit our policies of the past. So we're definitely going to make some more stringent changes.
Ms. Doom, if you don't mind either, I would like, I mean, obviously I think that it's important for us as council to be held to the same standards. So like if we are going into City Hall, I think we should be doing the same thing. So if you can make sure those forms and things are available to us to also fill out and make sure our temperature check, you know, we're getting our temperature check, even because we're coming in and we're communicating with you guys. You know, we should be held at the same standard as, as everyone else, so.
Well, the really interesting part about us having this online login before we come to work and take the checklist and, you know, it's got a, if you answer yes to any of the questions, it's a big stop. Don't come in. Go see your physician, go do what you need to do. But what's interesting is we've been able to link it to an Excel sheet that is now going to track the responses and COVID rates that we may have with our employees. So we can have a better handle on what's happening. But yes, we certainly can send you that link also. And that'll kind of allow for when you come in. And it's really not meant to be punitive to the employees because we're all going to have to work together to remind each other to put that mask on. I do have some strong language in it that, you know, addresses people who are not wearing their masks when they should. But in reality, the whole purpose is for us to all work together and remind each other, you know, put your mask on. That goes for all of us because we're not accustomed to doing this. This is something very unusual for us. And we all thought we'd be done with it by now. But here it is back and it's back strong. So it's going to be a group effort for us all to work closely together to make sure we protect ourselves and our residents.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you both. Moving along to reports from administration.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to make a quick.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
That's okay. That's fine. Okay. I'm sure that all of us, the five of us would be anxious to, once you get it out there and writing to send that to us, whatever way you can. So we, we need to be part of it. Sarah is absolutely right. But good going. Good job.
Mayor, if I could jump in too?
Yes, please.
I guess two points. I think, yeah, first of all, thanks for putting those orders together. Second, I think though, if you're, if like two people, well, first of all, I hope we have as few people at City Hall working in person as necessary, you know, if someone can do their full job from home, hopefully they can either use a laptop or log into their desktop from home. Hopefully we're setting that up. You know, hopefully we're working with our IT group to do anything necessary there. But if you're sitting in two cubicles next to each other, I think not having a mask on is, if not very helpful if you're in cubicles next to each other. Maybe we can set it up where people are far enough away from each other because I'm pretty sure the requirements were, I don't think I have it in front of me, but I, you know, if, if you're not in an enclosed office, you should have a mask on. So hopefully we're doing that. And then, I thought I had one other item about this, but I can't remember now. But yeah, hopefully, hopefully we're following that.
Okay, thank you.
Because I know they have the face protectors, the face shields, Ms. Doom, that probably would be more comfortable and wearing if they're going to do it for eight hours instead of a whole mask covering their nose with the face shield.
Right. We'll give the employees an opportunity.
Okay.
See what they're most comfortable with. Yeah.
Right.
Based on our last meeting, I've, I've done some serious shopping, looking at all the different types of masks. But I also recognize that everyone has their comfort level. So I don't want to impose one or the other on an employee. Some have their masks that they've purchased and they're very comfortable with. Some prefer the shield. So as long as we're protected, that's the important part.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Sounds like everybody's doing their part. So anybody else want to speak on this? Seeing none. Let's go with the reports from administration, starting with our city manager, Ms. Doom.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
I just jotted a few notes down as most folks now from our newspaper articles and of course us posting on our website and Facebook. This is the second week we are now closed. We had an outbreak of COVID. We had started with one employee, which then we sent everyone for testing. And as some results started to come back positive, we shut down City Hall. We sent everyone home to quarantine. I'm working from home. Fortunately, through the CARES Act, we were able to secure some high end. And what I mean by high end is some really good computers, laptops that will truly allow our employees to log in, work from home. So we have a higher percentage now than we did when COVID first hit that people are able to work from home. One, which we didn't have in the past, we've got our building department. Anyone who is sending emails to you or to me, I'm able to reach out to Ms. Hartcastle and she's able to deal with appointments, with issues with people, and that's made quite a difference. We do recognize though that a lot of mailboxes are full because people haven't been in to listen to their voicemails. So, you know, please bear with us, public. We get it. I do appreciate that a lot of people have been reaching out to me via email, asking me for information. And so I encourage people to do so. I will respond. I will also direct you to which department you need to talk to, to get the answers that you're looking for. You know, we had quite a bit of down trees and high wind and inspections that people were waiting for. So it's been a pretty crazy couple of weeks. So let's see, what else do I have? Well, last week I did mention, or last, yeah, that was just last week. I did mention a very, you know, heartfelt thank you to Kimmy Rich. I was a little tired that night and I couldn't get out all the names. So I want to, once again, thank Kimmy Rich, Heather Sexton, and Monica Martinick. Those are three ladies that really made this election happen. The most tireless working people you'd ever want to see. Lot of additional help. It's been really wonderful, but those ladies worked themselves beyond what you would expect anyone to do. Very, very dedicated employees and I couldn't be prouder. And I do want to say thank you to Mr. Fairbrother for all of the election advertising, the banners, the sweatshirts, T-shirts for the get out the vote. So as we can tell from our totals, we had some good votes. A lot of folks came out. Of course, that was around the entire country. But. But, um, as far as elections, a lot of people participated this year, so that's a really positive thing. And that's my report tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Doom, and thank you to all the people that just, um, you, you mentioned and helping, and Mr. Fairbrother did an amazing job too, um, with the video. He went over the top. I think we'd only see that went as over the top in the whole state of Michigan. So, I was happy about that. We did a video about and showed so many beautiful parts of East Point and showing how, you know, we come together. Um, I wish that Ease project was done by that time when you made that video, but we always can redo it when the project is done. So, thank you for all the hard work done, and everybody included, um, as well. Um, we're gonna talk to our finance director, Mr. Blum, good evening, Mr. Blum.
Yes, Madam Mayor, council. Um, I just have one, uh, topic, uh, the, uh, vehicle damage to the council chambers. Uh, it's been taking a long time as people work from home, but, uh, by the end of this week, the goal is that there will be a contract in place to get the repairs going. Uh, MMRMA is, uh, should have it finalized hopefully by Friday. Uh, and then it's gonna be a matter of ordering supplies, and everything will depend on when the parts and pieces show up, when the work can get done. We are hoping it's before the end of the year, and things get too cold in there, uh, and hopefully, before we start meeting back in person again, because it could get chilly in January. But, uh, it is progressing, just a little slower than anticipated. Uh, and that's all I have.
I'm sorry, council, did you, uh, have any questions for Ms. Doom or the director? Okay. Seeing none, um, our city attorney, Mr. Allright, good evening.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, Madam Mayor, I do not have, uh, any updates to provide at this time, but I would like to take the opportunity to, uh, on behalf of both myself and the, uh, city attorney's office to, again, welcome, uh, council member Sylvia Moore, uh, to the council table, so to speak. Uh, I know we're, we're obviously appearing by Zoom, but, uh, would just like to, again, extend a nice warm welcome. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions any of the council members may have.
Thank you, any questions for our city attorney? Seeing none, moving right along to new business, for the approval of MERS-defined benefit administrative agreement, we have our finance director, Mr. Blum, if anybody has any questions. If not, can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve the MERS-defying benefit administrative agreement.
All right.
Move and support it, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson D'Monico?
Yes.
And councilperson Moore?
You're muted, uh, councilwoman.
Sorry, yes. Sorry, thank you. You can leave it unuttered if you want, you're a councilwoman now, you're part of the discussion. Uh, next item under new business, item B, approval of delinquent special assessment. We have our finance director, Mr. Blum. Um, I think the public probably want to know more about this, I'm gonna let you explain that to the public, Mr. Blum, and what we're doing tonight.
Okay, um, this is the, uh, everything except water bills that are now unpaid and delinquent. Uh, council has to take action to turn these into special assessment, which is what you're doing tonight, and that's what will allow me to place them onto the taxes as delinquent special assessments. Uh, water bills are automatically a lien on the property by state law, and the, uh, charter requires me to place delinquent on there, so there's no council action on water bills. But every other billing that we do does require council action, uh, prior to placing it onto taxes, and that's what this motion is tonight.
I know I talked to you about this earlier, I have one question, are some of these special assessment, I know they're delinquent, which means they have some late fees, correct?
Correct, yep.
Because I know we do, um, late fees, um, for our water bills to help the residents out, is there any way we can do that with these delinquent special assessments?
Uh, these, the fees on these are dictated by, uh, the charter and ordinance, but I guess.
Well, I'm talking about the late fees, as far as the late fees that are on there, is there any way we can waive those?
Um, I, I suppose you could, it, I believe it's, uh, 5% is late fee on all the ones rolling on taxes.
Okay, I know that, um, that's not on here, but I looked at, uh, agenda item on the, I think, uh, councilwoman, Lucido had added something about the waiving the late fees for the water bills. So, now I'm thinking about maybe waiving the late fees for these special assessments. Would that have to be something I have to add to new business? Or I can do it all in this one?
Yeah, I would add it to this motion, because it would have to be done tonight. These will go on to taxes by the end of the week, so we can get it to the printer. So, it's not like it, it has to happen tonight, if you're gonna make that motion.
Can we do it for the next meeting?
No, the tax bills will be out the door before the next meeting.
Council, any discussion on that, waiving the late fees for, uh, the special assessment?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I would not be in favor, only because this is from work that was done in 2019, if I'm not mistaken. So, this was before the pandemic. So, if it was something that was affecting our residents right now, because of like city hall being closed, or something like that, I would be, you know, agreeing to it, but because these are all well overdue, I, 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 I wouldn't be necessarily for waiving these fees.
Anybody else? So, when you do the, is that month by month, um, Mr. Blum, that each month is, uh, you know, or do you do it for the whole year, how does that work? Because maybe.
Um, these particular items, it's a one-time 5% penalty. It doesn't matter if it's 30 days late or three years late. Uh, water bills are every month.
Okay, so it's a 5% on each one?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we, uh, we spoke on that, let's go ahead and do a motion. Council?
Sure. I'll motion to authorize the finance director to place the following special assessments on the 2020 winter tax bills as follows. Unpaid sidewalk rolls, 180, 181, and 182 totaling $123,381.88. Unpaid weed bills dating back to June 2019 totaling $13,956.68. And unpaid abatement, demolition debris removal, secured buildings and sewer repairs dating back to June 2019 totaling $153,621.36, in accordance with the finance director's report dated November 17, 2020.
Any support?
All right.
Move and support it, please call the roll.
Councilperson D'Monico?
Yes.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
And councilperson Moore?
Yes.
Next item, item number C, introduction and first reading of ordinance 1204, amend chapter 2, administration, article 5, boards and commissions of the City of East Point Code of Ordinances.
Madam Mayor, I would move to introduce and give the first reading, the ordinance number 1204, which would amend chapter 2, administration, article 5, board and commissions of the City of East Point Code of Ordinances.
Court?
Move and support it, any discussion on this? Seeing none, you have motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Councilperson D'Monico?
Yes.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, next item is item D, discussion and possible motion for traffic control order 2020-01. We should have our director, Rohit, available, if you guys have any questions for him or a discussion on this. Director Rohit, there? Is he on here, um, anyone see him? I know he was talking about the traffic control, and why he wanted this. The council is, um, forward and read over it and did the discussion one-on-one with him. You can go ahead and do a possible motion.
There is, uh, see Deputy Chief Kaiser on the phone, but I.
Oh, he's down there? Good evening, Deputy Kaiser, Deputy Chief, how are you?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and council, I am well.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you there. I don't have the, the whole, you know, I think, uh, Councilman D'Monico is over that part. So, if you, I don't, uh, if you want to speak on this just a little bit for the residents, just a brief summary. What's up?
We had a, uh, temporary traffic control order for the prohibited left turn, and we believe that it, it should be a permanent sign there. Uh, the traffic island interferes with left turns from northbound Virginia to westbound Nine Mile, and having the no-left turn will prevent, uh, reduce accidents.
Okay, safety and saving lives, so do we have a motion, thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, I will motion to, um, permanently put up a sign to prohibit left turns at Virginia Nine Mile Road.
A second. Move and support it, please call the roll.
Mayor, I had a couple of questions, uh, before we move forward. I guess first, did we talk to McKenna about this, or, or the Traffic Association? Because when we first made these refuge islands, we specifically, uh, changed that one to allow better left turns, and as we're looking at Nine Mile here, we're going to be putting more refuge islands up and down Nine Mile, so I wouldn't want to, I mean, if we're removing this left turn, I would think we'd want to for others, but it's far enough from Nine and Grashit, I think that you should be able to make a, a safe turn there. I mean, if people aren't safely turning, I mean, it said like about half a dozen accidents, were all these accidents due to someone turning left? It seemed like a pretty vague, uh, statement in the agenda packet, but I think we should look at that, because I think we'd kind of be interested to look at that. We're especially going to be reconstructing Nine Mile, and we're, we're gonna have more refuge islands, I believe. Um, I mean, we'll see how things go and what they suggest and what the end product is, but I would think we're gonna have a similar situation up and down Nine Mile, probably on both sides of the street even.
Uh, yeah, I can address that, we have not talked with any traffic safety engineers about this. Uh, we do have the benefit of having our offices right across from that intersection, and we do watch cars strike the pedestrian island, uh, quite frequently. Usually drunk drivers get caught up on it, uh, but the light post that is supposed to be there has been missing for eight months or so, uh, because people kept knocking them down, uh, turning left from Virginia onto Nine Mile. It makes it almost a 90-degree turn, and many of the motoring public can't seem to do that. Uh, so we will never have a light post that will stand on there if people continue to turn left off of Virginia onto westbound Nine Mile.
Sure, so what about further down Nine Mile or in other spots? Should we change how the refuge islands are, you know, located? Like a little further from the intersection then, since you're saying it's a hard left? Like what about, because I, I just foresee this up and down Nine Mile, and I, I just, you know, should be just consistent up and down Nine Mile, I would think.
Uh, I agree, uh, I would like to talk to traffic engineers to get their input. So, on paper, it seemed like an excellent idea, but in reality, watching it every day, it is not. Um, we were gonna talk about, even adding more safety precautions around that particular island, like plastic reflective strips that, that stand up, uh, so people can see it and not run over it, uh, because it, it does not look good, um, being run over, the light post, the decorative light post is gone, the, uh, plants that are supposed to be there are not there, it just, it does not look good, because people keep hitting it. Uh, so we would need to do more research on that.
Thank you, anything else, Councilman?
I was just gonna say, I think personally, I'd like to just see what McKenna would say before voting on this. I mean, everyone will have their own, um, ideas, but, uh, I, I think in terms of, since we're do, you know, reconstructing them out so soon, I think that would be good to know. You know, we've got, is the temporary order then up as of now? Is that like, it expired already, or no?
I believe the order did expire, we cannot, uh, write tickets there anymore.
Okay.
The signs are still in place.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Curly, uh, thank you. Um, I guess the first question I would ask, uh, why are they there in the first place? My second comment would be, if they're so dangerous that we can't put a light pole up there, who do we have to talk to to take them off, take them down? Totally. Are they doing what they were supposed to do? And if the question is, well, we're not sure, we think so, but we're not sure, let's give permission. I don't know who you did from the state, I don't know, but let's take them down. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Everyone made a lot of sense, but since we want to reduce the, the accidents right now, I think we should go along and, um, approve this temporary order.
Madam Mayor?
To, until we do some things with McKenna and what Mr. Curly was saying. Yes, ma'am.
Right, if I can just, I just want to comment to what Mr. D'Monico said really quick. I do understand where you're coming from, but right now, on Nine Mile, between Kelly and 94, you can't make left turns, uh, through traffic. So, I, I, I think we, once we reconstruct Nine Mile, we can always reevaluate if we need to, if we want to open that back up. So, I do think it's a very dangerous intersection. I understand why, I have seen people drive over that curb, not, like, in the middle of the day, and they're probably not even drunk, just because they get over too late, and then they, they don't like actually crash, crash into it, you'll see them, a couple tires go up or whatever. So, I think that it's, uh, it's a good idea, and you can always just cut down the street before in Nevada or Boulder and still go to, you know, around, so.
Yeah, I think everyone has some really good ideas. I believe we had a, um, mo- motion and support. Is that correct? Mr. Fairbrother?
Um, I have motion by Lucido, supported by Moore, if that sounds accurate.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lucido?
Yes.
Councilperson Moore?
Yes.
Councilperson D'Monico?
No.
Councilperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, and Ms. Doom, um, can we try to work with the, um, public safety director? And, well, we, we're about to fix up Nine Mile, so I know all that will be added to it, but we need something right now, so.
Sure, will do.
So, I know that'll be a discussion right now in the works, so.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the Ease project, council. Well, I know Mayor Proton put this on the agenda, you want to talk about it a little bit, or you want to go ahead and?
Well, this was on our agenda before, and then we sent it to the planning commission, and they didn't, decided they did not want, they had no interest in giving us their opinion on it. So, I just thought that tonight, we as a council could maybe do a formal vote, whether or not we are choosing to allow Ease to put this sculpture up at Kennedy Park. Um, I don't know if anyone has anything to say, I've looked into this a lot. You know, we've had the information now for well over a month, so I, I'm feeling, I feel comfortable making a motion.
Uh, can I ask a quick question? How do we handle the dog park? Um, I think it's a similar situation here, a lot of folks, uh, raised money, um, in the community, and then we eventually set aside the property there. What was the, uh, process we went through at the, uh, city council for that? I know we eventually made a, um, we made an ordinance eventually at city council. I don't know what prior approvals we did before that, I was just curious if anybody knows. I know, maybe.
What project are you talking about, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The dog park at Memorial?
I, I guess.
I, I, you know, if I could, if I could chime in, and, and, no, I, I can't answer, sorry, sorry. Yes, if anybody knew, I don't know. Um, I, I'm looking at this thing as that the organization or the folks that want to do this, they don't want any city money, they're raising, they're, they're gonna raise the money themselves, they're gonna put it up there themselves, they're gonna buy it themselves, and I think all they need from us, and I agree, is, is have so many square feet at Kennedy Park to put it up. It's, it's, I don't think it's that big of a deal, just, just let them do it and get done with it. It's gonna be beautiful.
What did they say?
And they're gonna, they're gonna, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Sorry about that.
They're gonna raise a lot of money for this, and, um, that's it.
Now, I noticed that Kennedy Park, but do we have, um, did they, I believe they sent to something actual location in Kennedy Park that was put in it, Ms. Lucido?
Yes, there was a map that we received, um, on the location on where in Kennedy Park, which is kind of like close to the corner of Ni- uh, Stevenson Schroeder.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, council, can I?
Madam Mayor, Council, can I jump in here for a second?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, for the dog park, uh, what was done there is there was a, uh, private organization, My Dog, that raised the money. What, uh, happened when they had the money and they were ready to go is there was a formal agreement that was approved by city council, um, that the council allowed the group to install, have everything installed. Once it was complete, all of the installation was then turned over to the city as city property. But there was a formal agreement between the organization and the city that council did approve. Uh, I don't remember when, uh, it's gotta be in file somewhere in the city manager's side. But I do remember there was an agreement that was, uh, brought before council. So there was some action on that one.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, if I could, uh, that, uh, first reading was performed back on December 2nd of 2014 by the city council.
Okay. I wasn't on council at that time, so I don't know if anyone was on here that was. So, but we'll do our research on that. Uh, Ms. Lucio, do you know why they, they chose that park? Cause I would have liked to see it in the downtown area in the, in the median. So when people are driving down and could see it. Because every, I don't think everybody will go to, I mean, everybody's not gonna see it at that park. I would love for people to see, you know, coming down the DDA and I believe the DDA probably would have donated the money for the project. Cause we have some, you know, they have a, a fund themselves.
Um, so I did bring up the median to the East Order Organization. I think I actually mentioned it at the planning commission meeting.
Okay.
Um, and they said that because I believe it was MDOT would not give them approval to put it in the median. Issues with that or something like that where they weren't allowed to be up, to put it up in the median.
Really? Hmm, okay. Well, I love the idea. So.
Mayor?
Madam Mayor?
Um, yes, I don't know who's talking first, Councilman?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Oh, Ms., who, Councilwoman, um, Moore, sorry.
Um, yes, they did say that at the, um, planning commission meeting that, uh, they would not allow it to happen in the median.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I, I think I would like it in the median though, as a representation of the city. So I know we have our commissions and we have their opinions, but as a city coming together, I think it's the rep, when you represent the city and want to show togetherness, it should be shown and not hidden in a park. So I disagree with that.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't own, the city of East Point doesn't own the median, I don't believe. I believe that's owned by the county. Cause Grashit's owned by the county or, right?
Right, yeah, yeah, the, um.
So that's why, that's what they're saying. They couldn't get approval from the state. So it, I, I don't think it's like their, their decision. They didn't say that they were against the idea of the median. They said they couldn't get the approval from MDOT to put it on the median.
Okay. Well, you guys wanna go ahead and any more discussion on this? You guys wanna go, go ahead and?
I was just gonna comment on, uh, the ordinance that Mr. Albright brought up.
Yes, sir.
Um, I was on city council when, when that ordinance was brought forward. Now, that was after all the money was raised and yeah, we did pass a whole dog park article. It's in chapter eight animals here. Um, did we do anything before that? I guess so. Because at, at that point, all the money was raised and I think pretty much things were in motion and I think we might even had a, probably had a ribbon cutting pretty shortly after that even. Um, did we do anything before that? I just wanted to try and replicate the same thing. Just make sure we kind of go in a good pattern here, um, on this project. Mr. Albright or Mr. Blum, do you know?
Yeah, that, the, the contract I was speaking to was long before the ordinance. You're right. The, the ordinance came about as it was getting ready to be built. But the agreement was at least six to nine months prior to that. Uh, we just have to dig through the records and find it.
Right. Madam Mayor, if I may, the
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Dog park is probably 500 times bigger than the space that this group needs to put this up. Uh, and they don't have, they don't have to have picnic benches and around it like we have at the dog park. And there's other, other things on the dog park that the city probably put in there. Uh, again, uh, I'm just confused why this is, I'm confused that why this is a no brainer. And Sarah, whenever you're ready to make the motion, I'll support it.
I think Sarah, Ms. Lucio has something to say. Everybody in the audience, usually, um, we don't really go back and forth when we're doing a council. We try to, so give me one second.
Madam Mayor, I will go ahead with a motion, uh, if you don't mind if I do that.
I think we had two, uh, you know, the residents want to speak on it, but usually we don't, in the, in the middle of motions and, um, speaking with the council, we usually don't do that.
I don't, sorry. I mean, it's, it's up to you if you want to allow them to speak, but.
Yeah.
When do we get the motion on the, when do we get the motion?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I think they were just probably worried that one gonna get passed. I think it is tonight. I think it is tonight. So you got a motion and support?
No, I'll make, I'll make the motion. Hold on.
Okay.
I motion to forgive the organization ease, um, permission to place a sculpture within Kennedy Park in the location that they provided us. As long as they come back to council with all final plans of the, for approval of the actual sculpture or anything else they're gonna add to it at the time when that's ready.
There, Sarah, I want to support that, but I, I'm not sure what, what would you, what would you look for when they come back? The color of the sculpture or the size of it or what direction they put it in? I mean, how do you, how do you want to control that?
Mr. Curly, I only, because we, they gave us plans on the sculpture they plan on doing, but if they want to change the sculpture, I think that if they change it, it should come back to us for approval. If they have any design changes to what they've already provided us, I think it should have to come back to us for approval. Because they gave us like a rough draft of a design, but if they're gonna change it, ultimately it could change the way, whether or not we want to have it in the park. What they provided us now is, I think, is fine with approving. But if they decide to change, just to clarify, they decide to change it or add a mural to it, that we approve those changes.
Yeah.
So correct me, um, if I'm wrong. I'm sorry.
We have to have a second to the motion before we talk to it. I, I'm gonna support the motion because I think, I think they're ready to go. So I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I, we, you just needed a second. That's all.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, Ms. Doe, when we put things in, in parks and things like that, don't we have someone that has to measure it out, a professional that does that? Before, I know council does the approval and we have, uh, ease during the project, but do they have someone that actually measures it out, measure it out like a engineer or somebody that does planning and I know, I don't know if, if anybody is on here.
We could, we could also have our public works department go out and measure the area. They're not looking for a large space.
Okay.
It's a small area and I, I, I was listening to concerns of visibility. And so where they're asking for it to be put in Kennedy Park, uh, it's not as visible, of course, as being on Grashit, which we would love. But it is on the outer edge of the park where a lot of people pass by on Stevens. So, um, it would still be highly visible, but no, I don't think we need to have an engineered, um, space designed for it. Um, they, sir, there's a lot of ways and, and our attorney can certainly, um, speak to that too. Of, you know, they certainly can donate the, the sculpture to the city. Have a, uh, maintenance agreement and pepper to go and can't even get my words out. Uh, there's a lot that we can do, but, uh, on a small area like that, I don't think we need a, a formal survey because we're not giving that land to them. It still stays with the city. It'd be different if we were giving them a permanent easement.
Okay.
Give it or actually donating a piece of land, but we're just allowing them use in our park. So our public works guys could go out and measure.
Okay, sounds good. I'm gonna go ahead. I've got motion and support. Cause Councilman Curly about to have it fit up there. So.
I just have one more question about process. So before, so raising money for it, are we, um, I know we've talked about this in the past about the nonprofit status and how we've gotten money for, um, Music in the Plaza and such. Are, as this group raises money then to get to the total they need to do the project, are we collecting that money through like a line item in our, uh, the same way we do for like Music in the Plaza where there, um, you donate and it's, you know, tax deductible. We just have.
Your answer is yes.
Okay.
No, Cardi, Cardi, I love you to death. I really do. I love you. But you know what? We've been talking for that, about this for 25 minutes and we, we took that little molehill and now it's bigger than Mount Everest. A little tiny, little tiny thing that a little, a little group of citizens wants to do. And they're raising all, their own money. By the way, council, get your checkbook out. You want, you should donate too. Uh, and to, just to do it. We don't need DPW, LK over there. We don't need AEW over there. Just, just, Madam Mayor, I call for the motion. I love you, Cardi.
Okay.
Didn't have questions right after we made the motion.
Right. And also, Ms. Doe, if you can look into the, uh, Arts Commission, working with them, maybe we can use some city funds to help donate, uh, for this project. Uh, we got motion on the floor and support. Can, can you please call the roll?
Counselperson Lucido?
Yes.
Counselperson Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Counselperson D'Amico?
Yes.
Counselperson Moore?
Yes.
Adam, uh, discussion update on Kelly Road property and tax reversion properties received in August. We have our economic manager, Ms. Holman. Good evening. Do you want to, um, take the floor?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you. Um, yes, um, updates, um, the Kelly Road property closed last week. Um, there were some delays due to the buyer's title company having to review the, what's called a FOIA packet, which is actually the tax notices that are provided through the tax, uh, foreclosure process. Um, they need to review those for insurability. Um, the buyer has, uh, insured $100,000 um, because of the amount of money that's going to be invested in the property. Um, also the city was reimbursed the summer taxes of almost $15,000. Um, it's anticipated it's going to take a minimum of six 40 yard dumpsters. Um, so it's a, it's a, a project long coming. Um, and, uh, there's some, some exciting plans. Also, um, some ideas being floated about even possibly putting a rooftop deck for the food establishments that will be there, which would be very fun to sit up and, and observe Kelly Road and the greenery, um, because it is such a nice, um, a, a nice corridor. Um, I'm not sure if anybody has any other questions on that. We can move on to the new tax reversion.
Any questions? Ms. Holman?
Sure. I guess one, one quick question there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the update, Ms. Holman. Um, so I, I see like BSNA doesn't have the update. We have closed. We just haven't, uh, updated that the city does no longer own these properties.
So, and sir, you had brought that up previously and my understanding is that there is an issue with BSNA. Um, because what the public can see, um, and I've talked to our assessor. Um, he's been working with our IT department. This was several months ago. You had mentioned that about a different property. Um, that there was, um, a mix up with that. Um, actually I have the PTA in my possession and I'm just waiting for city offices to reopen so that that can be processed. But, um, as it relates to the, the bigger picture, it is, there is some sort of a delay. I don't know that it's been fixed yet in terms of what the public can see in BSNA as it relates to city ownership. Um, and I will double check and find an answer to that as to whether it's been fixed since we upgraded BSNA.
Okay, thank you.
I think Councilwoman Moore has something to say. I'm not sure. Oh, he didn't? Okay, I'm sorry.
Raise her hand.
I, I do just quickly, just for, um, reference sake, a PTA is a property transfer affidavit. Uh, I'm used to the jargon too, but not everyone is. And that is what goes to the assessor's office so that they can then enter it in as having a transfer of new ownership. So just a, a little clarification for those of us who don't work with it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, moving rather along to the tax reversion properties.
So in 2020, the summer, end of summer, um, the city purchased 12 properties, one commercial, seven residential proper structures and four lots that were all residential. Um, we had former tenants in two of the residential properties, um, and city attorney's office issued notices to quit, uh, to two of those residential properties. Um, we have not heard, their deadline has expired. We have not heard from one. So the city attorney will be proceeding a complaint to terminate tenancy. The other one, the woman has been in contact. Um, she has, she is per, looking to purchase a home. So we have agreed to give her an extension until December 7th to vacate the properties, uh, to vacate the property. And, and my understanding is the city attorney has also documented that. We did receive, um, and so we have no idea of the condition of those two homes. Um, we have some, a couple of nicer home, well, not damaged homes, and we have some that are, are typical for tax reversion. Um, we do have a, a very bad hoarder house. As apparently one of the worst that has been seen by the code enforcement staff. Um, the exterior overgrowth and debris were removed, well, uh, probably a month or two ago, um, after some complaints were received. And I know council member D'Amico, um, was aware of that and, um, Ed's two men and a mower did a great job with everything that needed to be pulled out of there. Um, they now has a dumpster in place and they are starting to remove all the debris. It is literally taller than me. Um, I can fit through, um, but it, it, it's, it's bad. Um, the basement probably has about three feet of visible space, but otherwise it's, it's floor up. Um, so once that is removed, um, although Mr. Blum did a quick tour and said he thought it was structurally sound. So we appreciate his expertise. All the cereal boxes and soda bottles. Um, so we should have more information on that. Um, we do have one, uh, that also has some standing water. So we have put in a request to DPW. They of course have been super busy with between the election and leaf removal and, and emergencies and, and water main breaks. They will be pumping out the water. There is remaining items in the house. There's also a lot of, um, sagging walls and ceilings. Um, so once the water is pumped out and we can get the debris removed, again, we will check that for, uh, for viability. Um, another property had been frequent in, frequented by trespassers, uh, per the neighbor. The reason for that was that none of the doors or windows, uh, would actually lock because they're out of order, out of sync. Um, but when we went in with the locksmith, those were sealed from the inside. Um, that, uh, property has now, just this week been, uh, completely cleared out. I was there today. They were, Ed's group was cleaning out the garage, including probably a four foot diameter water heater that I've never seen before. Um, so then we will have the, that house, um, visited by a, a licensed inspector to tell us the issues that are going on. We do have two houses that were empty, um, that were both winterized several years ago, um, by the former owner, which happened to be a real estate trust that seems to keep, uh, losing properties that people have, you know, their, their retirement funds that they've invested. Uh, the homes are a little bit better condition. They were inspected by a licensed home inspector. There are some issues, um, that we are addressing. Um, nothing that could prob, you know, could not easily be fixed. Um, we have a sewer line break, um, which we could put into the, what the city is doing in terms of, um, replacing the lead lines. Um, we do, uh, have a roof that needs repaired. So that's something that we will have to go out to bid. Um, but otherwise some of the other issues, HVAC, uh, water heaters, plumbing breaks, things like that, internal plumbing breaks are things that we probably can fix. So I'm gonna look at that and see, um, how that fits into the city resolution and whether those properties could perhaps be offered to, uh, city employees. Um, we also did receive four vacant lots. Um, we did a, a adjacent owner closed bid process and three of those four lots were scooped up very quickly. Um, each had a bid from a, uh, adjacent owner. Um, those have all closed, uh, pursuant to council approval on Flower, Brittany and Beaconsfield. Coincidentally, the fourth lot on Donald is actually adjacent to one of our new tax reverted homes. Completely coincidentally, um, not part of the same foreclosure. So our thought is to combine that lot with the adjacent, with the house that we have and, uh, offer that for sale. Um, so, um, otherwise our other programs are moving along. Um, we have some properties that should be coming to completion. Um, I will keep everybody updated and hope to have, um, plan to have some pictures, before and after pictures for the renovations that are being done, um, out to council this week.
That sounds good. Now, the, uh, commercial properties you talked about and the past commercial properties, do, are there available online for investors to look at? I mean, how do they know about these things?
So the new commercial property that we got on Grashit, um, again, the city attorney's office served a notice to quit. There was somebody claiming one half of the property. We have an appointment on Friday with the locksmith, since that time has expired and there's been no, uh, no further contact with that owner. So we will be going in to change the locks and and move the utilities into our name. Um, and and give an idea, half of that building is is basically gutted. There's not even a floor, there's, um, floor, there are, um, sort of, uh, support beams and and sand. But if unless you got really big boots on, you're not going to make it to the front door. It was filled with garbage in the back, um, so again, we had to pay to have that removed. So we will see what the other half looks like. We have two, uh, units on the other side of Grashit. We are currently scheduled to have the plumbing and the HVAC, um, inspected, to make sure that they are working. We know there's a leak, but, um, we've, hopefully, it's something that just can be repaired and not full replacement. With the signs in the window with my name and phone number, there have been a lot of interest in terms of leasing, although it's my understanding that the city does not want to be a landlord. So, um, as soon as we get the the plumbing and the HVAC and any other issues identified, then we would, um, come forward with a plan and and hopefully market those properties.
Okay, sounds good. Hopefully, um, if we don't have anything already put together, Ms. Holman, when we get these commercial properties and they are in bad shape with no flooring, it should be something we can be more proactive until they get that bad. And then we own it, and we got to reconstruct the whole thing. We should be issuing, uh, tickets or fines or something, or taking that property before it gets that bad, and we own it. And we got to take care of that property, that's horrible.
And and if I may, um, I've been, um, working both with, uh, with Mr. Blum and with our our new building official, um, Ms. Hardcastle. There are some creative ways to, such as, um, sort of an expedited tax reversion policy, so instead of a three-year, if the property is vacant and there are building code issues that with council approval, it's very specified, so it's something that we would bring forward, um, but the council would have to approve a resolution on October first. Okay. Whereby, so again, for next year, whereby properties that would meet the criteria would actually foreclose a year earlier so that and they would be sitting vacant, they would be delinquent. So it's something that we will put together, you know, well before next, next fall for your review and and run it by the city attorney, but there are tools in place, and and so we've had some very creative discussions about that.
Okay, thank you, one more thing, this is for Mr. Albright. I know we talked about some of the residential properties, we have people that are living in there, and I think Ms. Holman said one of them has to leave. Correct me if I'm wrong, December fourth. Can we do an extension for those people that live in those homes due to COVID? Will they give at least January first or February first or something?
Madam Mayor, I know that, uh, Ms. Holman has been in contact with various occupants in the past, and depending on their circumstances, uh, the city has granted an extension to allow those occupants to find another place to live.
Okay. Thank you, and some resources that we can help them with as well. Thank you for that. Next item, item G is discussion and possible motion on waiving late fees for water bills due this month. This was brought up by, requested by Councilwoman Lucido. Ms. Lucido?
So Madam Mayor, I added this to the agenda because of City Hall being closed last week and this week. I know there has been a lot of people who have gone to City Hall in attempt to pay their water bills, and with City Hall being closed for cleaning, I thought it was just, it was appropriate to waive the late fees that would be coming in for, um, I think it would be October bill. You know, for the people who have been unable to pay it due to the closure.
Council, any discussion on that?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we, we all know how terrible this coronavirus is, and it's going to get even worse for the coming months. We don't know if persons have the virus, we don't know if they lost their job because of the virus, we just don't know. And, uh, I know, I know Randy is probably, he's probably sweaty right now with the, sounding like I'm supporting, not charging the late fee for the October bill, but that's, that's exactly what I'm doing under the circumstances. And I know, I know we make money and, uh, Randy, you don't have to tell me how much we make, but that's extra money. If my bill is a hundred dollars and I don't pay it on time, you get a hundred plus, what is it, five percent? So that's, that's saying like, can you put a little bit more whipped cream on my, on my pie? That's extra, that's that's extra money. So I think that, I think the city could, will survive, uh, if we waive the penalties for the, uh, October bills. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this, council? This has to be, this seem like this is something, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Albright, does this need a motion? In support, if we're, um,
Yes, there, Madam Mayor, there should be a motion, I know there isn't a recommended motion contained on the
Should be a motion to, yeah, let's, it's not on here.
There should be a motion, uh, a recommended motion included.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion. I'll motion to waive, um, the late fees on the water bills that were due this month for the month of October.
Support.
Moving in support, please call the roll.
Counselperson Lucido.
Yes.
Counselperson Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Counselperson D'Monaco.
Yes.
Counselperson Moore. Ms. Moore?
I'm sorry, yes.
Next is payrolls and bills.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to pay the bills in the amount of two million ninety-one thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
A second. Moving in support, please call the roll.
Counselperson Lucido.
Yes.
Counselperson Moore.
Yes.
Counselperson D'Monaco.
Yes.
Counselperson Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. Next item is the second hearing of the public is now open. Thank you all who are, who who waited so patiently. This time you get three minutes, state your name and residency, and you are open to speak. We have Ms. Siopla, if I said correctly?
Chapa.
Chapa, I'm sorry, so a beautiful, unique name, so, and I think you raised your hand earlier, so, good evening.
Oh, good evening, um, this is a whole different topic than earlier, earlier is settled. Um, I was gonna make a few comments about that Virginia island. I live on Nevada, which is one block over, and I do my banking right on that corner at First State. And, um, when you're on the Virginia, when the, when the light was up, when you're on Virginia, even during the day, you really, it, the the island really wasn't highly visible. I I don't even know how to explain it, if it was the backdrop of that brick building across the street or what have you. But if we are going to replace it, I would say that you would really need to make some kind of light or something visible from Virginia, uh, because I've lived here most of my life, and three or four times I almost turned into it, trying to get on to Grashit. But also, another problem with that island is our beautiful lantern downtown lights. They are gorgeous, I love how they look, but they don't show a good visibility on the sidewalk or street. They shine outward. I'm also thinking that if we do work on Nine Mile, we might want to look into getting some downward lights so that you can see pedestrians walking at night. There's been many times I'm turning from Nine Mile onto my street of Nevada, and I don't see somebody walking through the crosswalk, even though there's the overhead lights. Like I said, I don't recommend removing them because they're beautiful, but they should have some kind of downward luminescence so that you can see the street and the the sidewalk.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you, uh, do us all a favor as well, um, which you did your part in coming in tonight, but can you email us? I know sometimes the residents tell us all this stuff, and I promise you, we have all these knows, but we remember it more when you email us and we can address it more differently. All of us, and it reminds us, if you don't mind doing that, and helping us out with that.
Definitely.
Thank you so much for your help with that. And thank you for the project as well, you and Mr. Sasek and Ms. Rayford and everybody else that's a part of that as well. Um, anyone else would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Mary Hall Rayford, as her hand raised, Mary, the floor is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you for giving us the final approval on the project, we've been anxiously and excitedly waiting to get started. And, um, just for a point of clarity, one of the first things we thought about was the median on Grashit and found out we couldn't do it. It is a very visible spot, but we want to make sure that we have it in a place where people can enjoy it, sit and eat a lunch. And we know because of all the continued support we're getting that it's going to be something the residents will be proud they had an opportunity to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much for putting it together. You guys are saying what M. Dot said, I'm the person that hate when somebody says no, you can't do it, I will call M. Dot, find the CEO, whoever I got to find to make it happen, you guys just don't know. Y'all make me just want to do that, because when the community comes together and does something, and it's so much going on that you can be doing and saying, let's, um, do something to bring this, uh, community together. You know, that that shows a lot of heart, so thank you. Anybody else would like to speak? Oh, Mr. Sasek, of course, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Gary Sasek, East Point resident, East Point Parks Commission Chairman. I also want to thank you for approving the project. Didn't get a chance to speak earlier when you were discussing it, but I think the key difference also between the Unity Monument and the dog park was the fact that in conjunction with the dog park, the residents have to buy a a pass to be able to take their dogs into it. And I think that's why there was a lot more structure involved with that, whereas the Unity Monument is just basically going to be a focal point very close to the front of John F. Kennedy Park, near the gazebo. And if we ever do get back to a form of normalcy, we will once again see our Veterans Day parades, our Memorial Day parades, and the community ends up at John F. Kennedy Park. So it would also be a reminder during those very special occasions that this is something meant to bring our whole community together. And again, thank you very much for approving it tonight.
Thank you, sir. Again, I was talking to, uh, Ms. Dome, because we know we have the Arts Commission, and I know, um, our commission sometimes, like we did, we partnered up with, I believe, DIA and things like, and other, um, organizations, if we partner up with them, maybe we can donate half of what they need to make this as the city partnered up with, you know, a nonprofit and help them make that happen, what do you think, um, Ms. Dome and Mr. Blum, is that a possibility?
It's a possibility, um, however, this group does not need to be a nonprofit because Mr. Blum will set up an account for donations that is separate from our regular money. But it certainly would be a a good, uh, team effort for both groups to come together and and work together to raise money.
Okay, because I really want this done. I'm excited about it. Anybody else like to speak?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Sheila Ulinsky would like to speak.
Good evening, Ms. Ulinsky.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, um, I just kind of hit a a comment and a question. Councilwoman Lucido had brought up the, um, signs further down on Nine Mile by ninety, between Kelly and ninety-four. And honestly, daily, those signs do not deter people from from turning there. I, I, on a daily basis, see several cars throughout the day turning over there, sign or no sign. So putting a sign at Virginia, um, wh- what's to stop them from disregarding that as as well? I mean, how do we get around that? That's all.
Thank you so much. And I believe that we're, um, working on that, but for us as a city to know accidents happen, not do nothing, just because people keep hitting signs, we still have to put something there. You know, for the liability and the safeguards of our city. But that's a great point, and we'll be working on that, thank you so much. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I see no other hands and no other comments in the Zoom chat box, so I believe it's now safe to close the floor.
Sounds good, thank you, I wish someone had another question just about the Councilwoman Curly. Oh, so the second hearing of the public is now closed, we want a mayor and council reports, we're going to start with Councilwoman Curly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one thing, uh, serious stuff. We're all living through, um, a virus that we haven't seen in our country in about a hundred years, and by all accounts, even though we're going to get some relief, it's going to get worse, there's still going to be tens of thousands of people who are going to die. And it's been proven by doctors and and people who are in the know, not politicians, the doctors, that wearing a mask will save thousands of lives, I believe it. And so all I want to say to the folks who are going to see this, uh, that this meeting on tape and the people who are watching right now, that if you choose not to wear your mask, when it's been proven over and over again that it's going to save lives, this is my message to you. Shame on you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Curly. Councilwoman Moore.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to, once again, thank everyone, and, um, I don't have much to say. I just want to say that I'm happy to be here and happy to have a seat at the table.
Sounds good, what a way to end the year, right? Be a councilwoman, right? Awesome is that, thank you, congratulations again. Councilwoman, you're welcome, Councilwoman D'Monaco.
Thanks, Mayor, and yeah, I guess first I'd say, yeah, not much, not many of us have good news in twenty twenty, but congrats again on being elected and, uh, look forward to working with you on city council. And I think just as Mr. Curly said, everyone just use common sense and listen to the scientists for for the pandemic, uh, let's all just make sure we all get through this and have a better twenty twenty-one for sure. Just listen to the MDHHS guidance, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services guidance, everything that's being put out. That'll save lives. And then also, if anyone's going to go to the Macomb County Health Department, they've trained, they've changed like the, uh, traffic pattern there to get in line to get a COVID test. So just check out their website, maybe real quick, but you don't need reservation or appointment or anything, you can just go, they're open, I think generally nine to three, Monday through Friday, but before you go.
I'm waiting for eight o'clock, but I know we have dinner.
And and you can, uh, get a free test. So I think that, that was all I had for tonight, though, thank you.
You said before.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lucido. Ham and cheese, we have for you, dude. Somebody's eating dinner. I'm getting hungry, can you guys put your, your phones or your computers on silent, please?
I asked you earlier what was dinner plan, you told me leftovers.
Councilwoman Lucido, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would just like to give a shout out to our DPW for their hard work on Sunday and Monday and probably even today, cleaning up all the debris and the trees, um, from the extremely strong winds we had, um, during the day on Sunday. So I'd like to give a shout out to them, because I know that some of them had to come in on Sunday, when they were probably trying to enjoy time with their families to get that done. Um, and I would also like to, um, just, you know, make sure we remember to mask up, the numbers are high right now. The governor has stepped in and put some new, um, regulations in place, and I know it upset some people, but, you know, she's only doing it for our best interest, she, she really just wants to keep everyone safe, and she just, you know, wants to protect us. But other than that, just pray for those who are sick, and that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I'm going to, uh, we have the the East Point Goodso organization, they are blessing ten families in the, in this community, they usually do more than that, but they were, uh, limiting Ten families in need in this community, they usually do more than that, but they were limited due to their resources, but for those that. Need assistance, and I have a list here that they gave us, thank you again to the Deputy Fire Chief Nick Sage for giving this out to us. Some organizations, is the USMC Toys for Tots are giving out toys, the Salvation Army, food and clothing, the Metro Detroit Area Lions Club. And all of these have links to them, twohands.org are just some of the places that you need help as far as food, resources, clothing. And toys for your children this year, I want to say a big congrats to the East Point High School, they went against King. They were, I would like to say they are successful, they just didn't win that night, but they, there are, you know, our kids, and they were successful, they, they play hard, it's cold outside, you got COVID, so much stuff going on. So, it takes a lot of heart to still play the game and, you know, be, be at your very best, so congratulations to our East Point High School as well. And I also want to say a Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and you all can always invite the mayor over, I don't eat everybody macaroni and cheese, I'm starting to hear, I can't make macaroni and cheese and potato salad. But you shouldn't do too bad on the turkey, but I just want to say Happy Thanksgiving, you guys, make sure you wear your mask, be safe, check on your neighbors. And I ask everybody to check on your neighbors, pray for somebody, even if you don't like them, pray for them, at, you know, at this point in this year, we've seen a lot of division, a lot of hate for no reason. And people get so used to hating, they forget what they hate you for. And you know, and that's the spirit, when you continue to hate somebody, you don't, you don't even know why anymore, and it starts to spread just as bad as the coronavirus. So, you know, check on your neighbors, make sure they're okay, make sure they have food, make sure their sanity is good, but check on somebody. Yeah, because, you know, everybody needs someone, so I'm gonna wrap it up with that, can I get a motion to adjourn, please? For moving in support, please call the row.
I believe that was motion by Moore supported by Lucido, is that correct?
No, no.
Counselperson Moore.
It wasn't me.
Oh, I'm sorry, who was the motion maker?
It was Councilman Curly.
Oh, Curly, Counselperson Curly.
Yes.
Counselperson Lucido.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes.
Counselperson DeMonico.
Yes.
And Counselperson Moore.
Yes.
Me and Jared, everybody have a good gobble gobble week next week.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Eat a lot.
Eat a lot, for me.
Have a safe holiday.
I love pumpkin pie, I love pumpkin.
Cover nose and mouth, please.